...meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If everyone would stand, please, our Commission Chaplain Romell McMurray will lead us in our prayer and our prayers. Romell.
If you could, please bow your heads. Most gracious and all wise God, we thank you for this day and for being who you are. We are incredibly blessed to live in the greatest country on earth. I ask that you go to those right now that may be hurting or facing some type of life challenge and remind them that seasons and storms don't last forever because the sun will always shine on the other side. I ask that you bring healing and restoration to anyone's situation right now. Help us continue to strive to do the best as a county, a state, and a country, and to live in harmony and to love each other more. Continue to guide us, this commission body, in the direction that you want us to go because we know that in Proverbs 3:5 and 6, it states that "to trust in the Lord with all thy heart, and to lean not into thy own understanding; but in all thy ways we acknowledge you, and you shall direct our paths." So I ask that you guide us to serve more, to pray more, and to care more for others as we await your return. And while we await your return, I ask that you increase more empathy, more peace, and more prosperity among us all. But sometimes, some things don't require or need prayer. They need discipline because you, oh God, have already told us what to do. So as I close, as always, I ask that you continue to bless those that protect us all across our land, and to be with our educators and students as they near the end of the school year, and give them the strength and wisdom to conquer any test and challenges that may arise. It's in your name that we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on a field of blue, God keep him strong in every tree. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Thank you, Commissioner McMurray. You may be seated. This time we'll call on the Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Prowl. Call the robe, please, Lisa.
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa. This time I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the reading and approval of our March meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have reviewed the minutes, among others, find them to be appropriate, move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes, and approve them as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This month, under our getting-to-know corner, I'll introduce our, once again, Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the introduction.
If you do not sit on public safety, you may not have gotten to know or met Director Lynn Duke of Juvenile Services. And so tonight, we've asked her and some of her team members to come up and introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their department and what they do, and the importance that they play for the citizens of Rutherford County. So Mrs. Lynn Duke began her career with Rutherford County in 1993 after graduating from Middle Tennessee State University with a Bachelor of Science degree. Lynn worked with the Rutherford County Youth Services Office until December 2000, when she became the Assistant Director of the Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center. Lynn was promoted to Director of the Juvenile Detention Center a month later, on January the first, 2001. As a Juvenile Detention Director, Lynn was instrumental in helping design the Juvenile Detention Section of the Juvenile Services Center, which was finished in 2008.
Lynn?
Thank you very much. Most of y'all have seen me on a regular basis up here, and I would love to take this opportunity not to so much talk about what I do, but to allow y'all an opportunity to hear what the employees of my department do. I've invited just a few of the fabulous people who work with us to give them an opportunity to share their passion for working with the youth that we serve. I'm gonna start off with Captain Leon Caesar. He's been with our department for about seventeen years now. He began with us way back when we were at the old building on West Main Street that's no longer there. And then he has a couple other people he's gonna introduce, and I want y'all to have an opportunity to hear from them tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say it's an honor to stand before the commission tonight, and I want to thank y'all for the opportunity. All right. Of course, I'm Captain. My name Leon Caesar, and I'm a graduate of MTSU with a degree of criminal justice. I just want to share how I started with the department. Of course, I started as a groundsman, working at the Murfreesboro Electric Department, and working there, it didn't fulfill my purpose. Every morning, I used to drive by the old juvenile detention center on West Main and was thinking, I would love to work at the juvenile detention center. One day, I drove up to the detention center with my work truck, and I seen a couple individuals outside in the parking lot talking, and I kinda asked them, you know, how do I get involved? And how do I become a detention officer? After we spoke, seventeen years later, here I am, a captain. Growing up in the inner cities kinda molded me in the direction of wanting to work with troubled youth as a detention officer. The highlight of my days was actually talking to those juveniles. Once you have a conversation with those juveniles in our facility, you'll realize that these kids are just lacking support and structure. We talked about different ways of dealing with anger and understanding their purpose. As time went on, I got promoted to Corporal, Sergeant, Lieutenant, now Captain. Nowadays, majority of my time consists of reviewing applications, conducting interviews, and searching for quality candidates who has a passion for working with juveniles. I don't want to bore you guys with all of my responsibilities, and of course, we couldn't do any of this without our amazing staff. I do want to introduce two individuals in our Education Department that have the opportunity to work hand-in-hand with the juveniles on a daily basis. Mr. Garland Henley, our Transition Life Skills Facilitator, who have been employed with the county for seventeen years, and our Chaplain Michael Davis, who has been employed with the county for six years.
I'll pull out my paper. You know, there's not too many times we get to stand before you all and share kinda what we do in between those four walls that Juvenile Detention Center. Like everyone said before, it is an honor to be up here and speak before you all and kinda share our passion and share what we do at the Juvenile Detention Center. Years ago, we used to have an open house, and we used to open it up, and everyone would come out and take a visit. That no longer exists, so now we're here to share. My name is Garland Henley. I'm our Life Skills Transition Facilitator. I am under Title I, as well as jointly with the county, and what I do is I'm responsible to make sure that the kids that are there are receiving educational services and other additional educational services while they're there. That is, starts off with schooling, that we all are familiar with. Before nine eleven, before COVID, we were doing virtual school, before virtual school became popular here in the county. The Board of Education helped assist us to get a virtual school, a virtual program called Edgenuity, that is paid for through the Board of Education funds, that allows us to be able to educate our children or provide educational services that is matched up with what they receive in their school today. That allows us to be able to provide educational services that is conducive to what they are learning exactly in their classroom and the subjects and grade level as well. We also, they gave us a sped teacher. So we have a sped teacher that comes out, is paid for through the Board of Education, that provides special education services for those juveniles that are having IEP and are considered sped kids. So that allows us not only to service one particular child, but all of our children that are challenged in some way or another. We also have been blessed to have a social worker, Ms. Tracy Wise, as well as, we have an at-risk coach that the Board of Education has provided for us as well, Ms. Ashley Stamps. That collaboration helps us to ensure that we're not missing any child being serviced, especially with their education, as well as the social worker helps us to assist those kids and their families that may have some type of need in their homes. So that helps us to be able to service not only the child at the facility, but the whole child, the mess with their family as well. With that being said, we also provide a parenting class, and it's free. It's free to not only the kids and their parents that's detained there, but it's also free to the public. So, a slight plug. If there's anyone who knows of a family that's in need of some services, especially parenting services, we are there to service them as well. There are some other things I would love to brag and tell you, especially about our Education Department, that since 2012, between 2018 and 2023, we have had the privilege of assisting twenty students to complete their high school requirements and obtain their high school diploma. That program was done through Penn Foster Online, and typically what we do is we give those kids a graduation ceremony. We put them in caps and gowns, parade them through, and they all have a contact visit with their family. And to encourage them, we dangle food in front of them to say, hey, if you complete the process, we'll get you food from your favorite restaurant. And that's what we give them as completion, for completing that. The great thing about that as well is that, out of those twenty, we've had three kids that, while they were detained, that finished their education, went on to get enrolled into post-secondary, which is college, at Motlow State Community College and Penn Foster College Online, and were able to do some college courses while they're there. Once again, it is virtual. We are not college professors, so that program helped assist us in letting them be able to get those courses in. These are some of the services that we provide, but there's also other services that we do. We do job readiness, that is provided for us through David Wells III, who is the owner, operator of Steak and Shake here in Murfreesboro. He comes out on a monthly basis. We also have Jeff Shikes, that is the Executive Director of Youth for Christ in Nashville. He comes down. He has a program that they do. If y'all are familiar with Youth for Christ, they are all in the school systems in Davidson County, and they are here as well in Rutherford County. They have a huddle program, and they also do prayer at the pole, at the flagpoles, once or twice a year. He comes out and provides that for us as well. We have Tristan Buckner, who does transitional program with us. He helps to assist those juveniles and adults that transition from a lockup facility and to, back into the public. These are some of the things that we have. He was brought to us, referred to us through Dr. Annette Heron, who is a board member of our Oversight Board with the Detention Center. These are just some of the things that we do in-house, as well as with Pastor Mike. Pastor Mike and our Eleventh Hour Program, which he'll dive into here in a few minutes. Once again, I'd just love to thank you all for the opportunity to listen to us, share what we do, and why we do it with you all.
All right, how's everybody doing? Good, thank you. So I am Michael Davis. I'm affectionately called Pastor Mike by a lot of the detainees there. I've been serving there since 2008, so I'm the part-time chaplain, and I've enjoyed my stay there. So my responsibility is to give the detainees an opportunity to receive some type of spiritual services while they are there. One of the things that I do is, while I was there, I had opportunity to talk to the young men and women, and I created a curriculum called the Eleventh Hour Program. It's where we really focus on the young people and try to give them opportunities to learn different things, how to deal with life in a better way, incorporate it with the gospel. It is a four-week, sixteen-week program that the young people go through, and there's four things that we teach them. One is to learn how to break chains, things that they're facing in their life. The four Ps, which is the people, places, possessions, and people in their life. Learning how to swim, which is learning things that they should do at home, which will allow them to do things long-term in the community. And the last thing is sticking with their vision and make sure that they are sticking to the things that they said that they're going to do in life. One other thing we do is called the Purple Book. It's a Bible study that we do with the young people there. It's a biblical foundation book that teaches discipleship with the young people. Help them with their mindset, help them to change their heart, to draw them closer to God, and teach them to do the same things that they've learned at the Detention Center, outside of the Detention Center. And also talks about cultural discipleship, which is becoming on mission for God. Then one of the greatest books that I like to do with the young men is a book called Manhood Restored. It's a book that teaches them about biblical manhood, how to become a man of God, understanding being a godly man and the misconceptions of manhood, and what's the purpose of your manhood through a relationship with Christ. And then the last thing that I do is I do one-on-one sessions with the detainees, which gives them a safe place to come and just talk, and open up their heart and their mind, and allow them to share what they're going through with somebody who wants to hear them. Also give them spiritual counsel. The advice I give them comes straight from the gospel, so that I'm not giving them earthly and worldly advice on things to do. I try to make sure that I always incorporate the gospel when I have these conversations. Then also, the last thing is give them opportunity to know me, so that they can trust me, so they can be open, and just allow themselves to be free while they're there. Because my goal is to make sure that they never come back, that they're making better decisions in life. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think that y'all will probably never know the number of lives that you have touched and changed through your life here on earth, and for that, Rutherford County citizens are very grateful. So this concludes the Gucci Corner, but the Juvenile Services Oversight Board has written a resolution of appreciation for these people, and Ms. Duke will present that.
Just quickly, I want to thank Dr. Michael McDonald for coming tonight, and I also saw Judge Steve Daniels, who's also a board member here this evening. What we're gonna do is we're gonna wrap this up pretty quickly. I'm gonna start off with the first part of this resolution, and then I'm gonna ask Dr. McDonald to come in and read the rest. So this is the Resolution of Appreciation, Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Officers and Staff. Whereas juvenile detention officers uphold the law with dignity while protecting the detainees in their care, and whereas the public has a right to be guarded from criminal activity, and whereas juvenile detention officers and staff work in partnership with juvenile system stakeholders, law enforcement, and community-based agencies toward the shared vision of a safer community, and whereas juvenile detention officers are responsible with protecting youth determined delinquent and the public's safety and care and concern, and whereas juvenile detention officers are trained professionals who provide education, health care, and behavioral health treatment resources to juvenile detainees under their responsibility, and...
And, whereas juvenile detention officers and staff serve on the front lines in our efforts to reduce juvenile crime and its recidivism, and whereas juvenile detention officers and staff are mission-critical to the community's harm by juvenile offenders and delinquent behavior, and whereas juvenile detention officers and staff serve as role models to our community, our youth providing guidance and life skills to successfully navigate in their respective communities, and whereas juvenile detention officers and staff utilize every opportunity while youth are in their care as a teachable moment, quote-unquote, and whereas many juvenile detention officers and staff view their public service as a calling to the profession, and whereas it is important to enhance public understanding of the juvenile system and to pay tribute to all who are part of this profession, and now therefore be it resolved that by Mayor Joe S. Carr and the Rutherford County Commission hereby extends their gratitude on behalf of a thankful and supportive community to all officers and staff of the Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center, resolved this eleventh day of April 2024. I'd like to just add a very brief statement. I shared with our director that while this was a resolution that I had drafted and our board unanimously passed, I thought it was important for us to present this in unison, to send the message that staff, community, and the Oversight Board are committed to our juveniles. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the resolution? Second. And second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, once again. Item G, under Public Comments, we've had one individual to show up, Keith McGowan, to talk about recycling. Mr. McGowan. Moving along. Item H, Elections and Confirmations. I'll call on our Steering Vice Chair, Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations. Item one, election of notaries. Commissioners, there's a listing of notaries. You may find those on your iPads. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County Notaries.
Second. Have a motion and a second to elect the notaries. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Item two, Steering, would like to confirm Howard Jones to a reappointment to the Conservation Board. Term will begin April 2024 and continue until 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move...
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Item three, we wish to confirm the appointment of Ben Weatherford to fill a vacancy on the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority. This term will expire March 2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move...
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Item four, Steering, would like to confirm Shelby Hutton to the Rutherford County Board of Equalization as an alternate. This will be a two-year term, from April 2024 until April 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move...
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item five, Steering, would like to confirm Dan Alcarne, Deia Goodman, and Gregory Tucker to the Rutherford County Board of Equalization. This will be a two-year term, from April 2024 until April 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move...
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Item six, we wish to also confirm Richard Reeves to the County Board of Equalization as the City of Murfreesboro representative. This is also a two-year term, beginning April 2024 and ending April 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move...
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item I, Resolution to Approve the Consent Agenda. Once again, Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you will see the items on the consent agenda in front of you. I believe that everything is appropriate, and my motion is to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? For this, we'll be on the board. You would?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. No unfinished business. Item K, Public Hearings. I'll call on our Planning Director, Doug Demossi. Mr. Demossi, you've got two extra minutes tonight.
I'll do shadow puppets for a couple minutes, if that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. Doug Demossi, County Planning Director. We have three rezoning requests for your consideration tonight. The first is by Andrew Vehinger for Persica Capital LLC, located along Butler Drive. The property is currently zoned residential medium density, or RM, and they're looking for employment and activity center, or EAC, and the size of the property is about seven acres. The applicant, actually, this area probably looks familiar to the commission, the applicant actually had property adjacent to this, to the north, zoned EAC, effective back in February of this year. The applicant did state that they would have had these properties also, under that same zoning application at the time. However, they were dealing with multiple heirs for the subject property, so they weren't able to get things all quite situated before bringing the first application. Development plans for the property include the construction of a building about approximately 137,000 square feet. There is a concept plan attached with your agenda materials on your iPads. This proposed use is for a cross-dock logistics facility. It'll have entrances onto the existing Butler Drive with an additional access point to the realigned Butler Drive, which would be to the west of the subject property. Now, this is not a planned development, so this is not a binding concept plan, but it does give you an idea of the direction the applicants would like to move in. The concept plan also shows access along Butler Drive, as I stated. The plan shows a parking lot with several regular parking spaces and also trailer parking spaces. Of course, if this is approved before any development were to occur, an engineered site plan would have to be submitted to our office for our consideration, as well as to the county's planning commission. This will need to demonstrate compliance with all city regulations pertaining to access and parking, landscaping. Most of this, with the EAC zone, buffering's handled just a little bit differently, depending on the use, because it's a mixed-use zone, but industrial uses are required to provide a Type III buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. Most of the surrounding zoning is zoned for industrial purposes, even that areas that are zoned in the City of Murfreesboro as well. So again, this will be all demonstrated on a engineered site plan, as well as performance standards would also have to be adhered to. Nobody spoke during the public hearing for this particular... Nobody spoke during the public hearing for this particular item. The planning commission did have questions about stormwater detention, access to the Butler Drive realignment. The applicant's representative did state that they are working to obtain additional property or easements to the new Butler Drive. And the county engineer also stated that the existing Butler Drive will remain, but it's where it currently accesses Joby Jackson, it would just be a write-in and a write-out. So, following that discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval of this by a unanimous vote. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Question.
Commissioner Oliver.
Can you speak to the residential piece of this plan?
There, there's not a residential piece to this plan. It's zoned currently residential, but-
The multifamily residential, that's not a part of what they're trying to do? You're saying that's the current?
RM, yeah. RM is residential medium density. That, that's a single-family zone. They're looking to change it from RM to the EAC, Employment and Activity Center zone.
So, when they talked about the purpose of the district, when they talked about the multifamily residential, that's not what they're wanting to do?
Correct. Now, this, EAC is a mixed-use zone. It doesn't make allowances for that, but that's not what they wish to pursue with this. They're looking to do an industrial-type development.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for staff? Seeing no one, this time I'll call the public hearing open for rezoning request, REZ-24-008, Andrew Vanhanger, located along Butler Drive. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is employment and activity center, and the size of the site is approximately seven acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Three, two. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That piece of property completes the residential in that area. It was, like, surrounded, if I'm not mistaken, by industrial commercial properties. And this is the final piece of moving residential out of that area, because they was totally surrounded by industrial development. And Butler Drive is going to be reworked, which will help. And so, I'm very proud of this project. It took a long time to get all this done. Murfreesboro City was the forerunner of this property, and they done a wonderful job. Murfreesboro Planning Commission, working alongside Rutherford County Planning Commission. So, Mr. Chairman, I so move for this rezoning.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition?
None.
We have one in opposition. Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our second request is by Jeffrey Turner. This is for property located at 5845 Franklin Road. Existing zoning is, once again, residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is office professional. Development plans for the property include interior renovation to the existing 2,600-square-foot house on the property to make it more functional for professional office space. The applicant owns property immediately to the west at 5871, and he rezoned it to a similar designation, office professional, back in 2022 for a similar type use. And he's also rezoned two other homes further to the east along Franklin Road, which, again, are housing similar uses. There's a little memo there from the applicant that I included with your agenda packets on your iPads. He doesn't have a specific tenant at this time, but he does expect something like the other properties that he's rezoned along Franklin Road. And he has also included a concept plan with your agenda packets. The plan shows access, of course, along Franklin Road, and shows a parking lot with about 10 regular parking spaces and one handicap parking spot. Of course, and he's aware of this and has done so with the other properties, an engineered site plan would be required to be submitted to the planning commission should this application be approved, which would show them, demonstrate compliance with all of our county regulations, which would include landscaping, buffering, parking, access. Of course, now Franklin Road is a state road, so they would have to work with TDOT for any improved access points. And our performance standards would also apply. Again, nobody spoke during this public hearing. The planning commission did have some concerns about stormwater runoff. One of the commissioners asked if they could do some sort of a regional, quote-unquote, regional pond, since he owns two tracks immediately adjacent to each other. The county engineer answered it was possible. There just had to be a signed agreement in case either of the properties changed ownership, so that in perpetuity, there'd be a document stating that both realized that this was the situation for the detention area. Following this discussion, the planning commission again recommended approval by a unanimous vote. And once again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing no one, this time I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request, REZ-24-009, Jeffrey Turner, located at 5845 Franklin Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is office professional. The size of this site is approximately one acre. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing open. Commissioner Romell McMurray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did speak with Mr. Turner back in January regarding this piece of property. I drive past it quite often, and I do feel like it's appropriate for this area. So, I do make a motion to rezon from residential medium density to office professional, per staff comment.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second for rezoning request, REZ-24-009. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final public hearing tonight is by Stan Bennett. This is for Redeemer Classical Academy. This is located along Veterans Parkway. Existing zoning is RM, and the proposed zoning is institutional. Size of the property is about 49 acres. Redeemer Classical Academy has been operating in a temporary location at the Fellowship Bible Church, located further to the north on Veterans Parkway, closer to Franklin Road. The applicant proposes to rezon this property to build a new, permanent school location. Their current enrollment is about 65 to 70 students. Future enrollments projected to be upwards of about 120 in about five to 10 years. Full buildout is anticipated to be about 300 students, which could be in about 15 years. You'll see the concept plan, it's been included with your agenda packets. They, you'll see that they also indicate at some time in the future, they would like to possibly build a preschool on the property, but that's not something that they're looking to do right now. So, looking at that concept plan, you'll see that initial plans include a phase of three buildings totaling about 13,200 square feet on about six and a half acres. Other improvements include the paved driveway and parking area, a playground, softball fields, and some multi-use athletic fields. The plan also shows the location of future buildings, including the daycare. But again, those are future, not anything they're looking to do in the near future. Since this is not a planned development, again, the concept plan's not binding, but it does give you an idea of how they would like to move forward. The institutional zone was created for these kind of uses, larger community assembly uses, schools, and whatnot. And the range of uses why we like this zone and created it this way intentionally is, it's limited as far as additional uses, like retail and commercial uses and whatnot. So, it doesn't allow those. You'll see that the concept plan indicates access along Veterans Parkway. There'll be a left turn lane created with 100 feet of storage and 150 feet of taper, along with a parking lot and parking spaces to accommodate their school. Should this be approved, of course, like we discussed in the other applications, they would have to do an engineered site plan that would be brought before the county's planning commission. Properties in institutional zones are required to install a type-one buffer. That is something that they will also demonstrate on the site plan, and they can use as existing plantings. There's a lot of plantings out there. Something that's unique about this site that presents some challenges is a lot of it's impacted by the hundred-year flood plain and floodway, so they have to be careful of the areas that they disturb. But those undisturbed areas that have a lot of foliage, they can use as part of their buffer. And again, our performance standards would also apply. Similar to the other two public hearings we had, nobody spoke during the public hearing for this item. Planning commission did have some questions about the septic and sewer use. Staff answered that the septic soil area is actually on the other side of Veterans Parkway. When Veterans was constructed, it actually split the property, so there's a small portion of the property, it's on the west side of Veterans Parkway, that's where the soil area is. And then the main area will be on the east side of Veterans Parkway. And they feel that that soil site is adequate for their purposes. They stated that they are not looking to access city sewer. There are also some questions about the turn lane improvement. We did answer at that time that, again, they are proposing a left turn lane, and that the applicant would have to work with the City of Murfreesboro on that, although the property and the road is in the county, due to the Southwest Loop Agreement that was entered into the city, with the city several years ago, they're responsible for maintenance of the road. So, following all that discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So, once again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Question, please. You stated that they'd have no plans for pre-K, so should they decide to do pre-K? Would they have to come back?
No, that would, that'd be allowed in the institutional zone. Now, they would have to have a site plan to the planning commission, but that wouldn't require any kind of zoning action by this board.
So, a site plan for pre-K has not been submitted? Is that what you're saying then?
That's correct. That's a future phase, thing that they want to do.
Other questions? Thank you. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request, REZ-24-010, Stan Bennett for Redeemer Classical Academy, located along Veterans Parkway. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is institutional, and the size of this site is approximately 49 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing open. Commissioner Romell McMurray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have spoken with the applicant on this particular project here. I do feel like it is in good standing, and so therefore I make a motion for rezoning from residential medium density to institutional, institutional per staff recommendations.
We have a motion. And a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anything else, Mr. Demossi? Thank you for being here. Reports by standing committees. L1 Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, Chairman Robert P.
Good evening, everyone. We've got one item. And what this has to do is a resolution to amend the ambulance service budget to pay for our ambulance people that have completed further education, to further them in, in their ability to help us. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical services, increased expenditures, in-service staff development, $10,000. A decrease in a sun, assigned fund balance of $10,000. Resolve this 11th day of April 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. For this will be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our business tonight. However, I want to mention that our next scheduled meeting for budget is May the 9th at 5:30. And also, I'd like to call on our finance director, Michael Smith, to update us on our recent bond issuance.
So, on April 3rd, we did a bond sale and a refunding sale in one. Happy to report that that interest rate was 2.82%. So, that was good news for us there. On the refunding, we saved right at, right at $700,000 on the refunding from 2014, so we're very happy with that. On the new money, we did a 10-year issuance instead of our normal 20-year for the Beatty Elementary Project, and we anticipate that to save us about $8 million, going with that 10-year at that interest rate versus the 20-year at a higher interest rate. And the other thing I'd like to point out that's on the sharepoint from the Budget Committee was our ratings reports. And so, we made those public, we put those on there. We did still maintain our good AAA rating with Moody's and our AA+ rating with S&amp;P. However, one of the things I wanted to point out on the Moody's rating and on S&amp;P, they both talked about factors that could lead to us with, at a downgrade. And last year during the budget cycle, we talked a lot about fund balance and the percentages there. And so, they have actually, for the first time, listed a fund balance percentage, and we talked a lot about that around 30%, and they put that in their ratings report this time. We did not make that request, we didn't know they were going to do that, but they did that. But those rating reports are on the sharepoint under the Budget Committee Fund Condition Report from this past month. But I, that is quite a bit of savings, so we're really happy with that. And we did have 13 bidders, and so that also shows that we had a competitive sale. And our strong rating played a factor in having those 13 bidders versus some other sales across the country that did not have as many with a lower rating. So, I just wanted to report that back to this body. Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael? Any questions that, on that, those comments? Any questions at all? Okay, very good. Item L2, Public Safety Committee, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have necessarily a report, but our next meeting will be Monday, April the 22nd, here at 5:30. I would like to remind the commission, if they'll think back to last year in April, the first of that month, that an F2 tornado came across the western port of, portion of Rutherford County, coming out of Marshall County, touching down in the Iggleville, Rockvale area, but going back up into the sky, actually in one of my back fields from my farm, and coming across the southern portion of Rutherford County, and then going towards the Redable Community, and then touching down and causing all torch of, all sorts of damage there. What I'd like to do at this time is to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, and I'd like to ask that our Director of Public Safety would come forward and give us a follow-up report of where we are tonight, a year later.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye. I'm not sure that that was necessary, but I forgot to put it on the agenda, so thank you for doing that.
Car 503, engine 62, heavy rescue 60, paramedic 23, paramedic 4, rescue engine 60, structure collapse, 1899 Leadville Street, cross off North Lassiter Barker Road and Old Woodbury Pike. Respond on OP3.
I don't know everybody tied up, but Old Woodbury Pike from John Barack into Kenny County needs to be closed immediately for power lines that holes across the road. We get headsets, start checking houses on Old Woodbury Pike. There's a lot of structural damage, structural collapses, multiple trees down. On it to the structural collapse, it's coming in off of John Barack Highway, on the Redable Street, just past the A and W Market. I'll be coming in, I'll assess on this for you, there's a lot of Kenny County, and so I'll say also.
Affirm.
Okay, you see, 101.
Little Tennessee Electric's en route to SS 311 Street.
Copy.
Every resident, you got a problem?
I did, I need your manpower, right? It's gonna be a big, uh, total collapse of the structure. This is why, we have multiple structures heavily damaged here, they're gonna need to send a couple crews out, whichever utility wants them.
Every resident is clear from where you're at, all the way to county line down to my post office.
This is why, we have multiple structures heavily damaged here, they're going to need to send a couple crews out, whichever utility wants them. Every resident is clear from where you're at, all the way to county line down to my post office.
Copy.
Reedable area, and our units responded. Eguville Fire Department assisted with Arrington. At the same time, we had multiple units in Reedable, which was showing most destruction. My Cannon County counterpart, and I met, we worked together, along with the mayor's office and the mayor's office of Cannon County, where we didn't know any boundaries. At the end of the day, there was 22 homes destroyed, 16 majorly damaged, 21 that had minor damage, and many others were affected. Without teamwork that occurred with these gentlemen, plus some, we had many, many man-hours out there. From our sheriff, fire department, EMS, OIT, highway department, solid waste, our mayor's office, our PIO, and the sheriff's PIO, and building maintenance departments, we all came together as one team, along with Cannon County assets, to make sure that the response was productive. In all, we had 5,559 man-hours while we were there for two weeks. Our sheriff's department kept the perimeter shut down and only allowed the residents of that area in. Everybody was escorted out at 7:00 PM. We had mutual aid from Arrington Fire Department that assisted Eguville. We also had Murphysboro Fire, Murphysboro City Assets, Smyrna City, or Town of Smyrna Assets, and also Smyrna Fire Department. Whenever we look at, what did this cost? I'm proud to say that when you tally all this up with a federal government relief and also with our state relief, when this is all said and done, $46,000 approximately came out of the county's pocket to make sure that the citizens of this county was taken care of. And I contribute a lot of this to the work of my staff there at Emergency Management to make sure that they have all of the documentations submitted to the FEMA. And I thank Kerry Clark for that. Without that being said, we had over 2,000 independent volunteers that came to the aid of our communities in Reedable and Eguville. It was absolutely astonishing. We also had a Church of Christ, New Hope Church of Christ, located in Cannon County, that opened their doors and ended up being a community center. We inundated that. So every volunteer that came through that site checked in at New Hope. American Red Cross, we developed a long-term recovery committee that assists our families in need during this event, and they're still in place today in the event that we have another long-term event. We'd like to thank Middle Tennessee Electric for their quick response, but not only did they do that, but they took their days off and came to help our citizens. The community of the Mennonites, couldn't thank them enough. All of this debris that was on people's properties was pushed to the roads so that our solid waste and our highway department could remove it. We can't go on their property, the Mennonites assisted in that. Our VOAD, VOAD Grabs, a volunteer organization active in disasters, was initiated by TMA. Hy-Vee Department Store, multiple department stores volunteered and sent all those other kind of things to the sites. Schools, we have a lot of students and a lot of schools come in to assist us as well. Cannon County Rescue Squad, and many other volunteer rescue squads to assist. And then there's many others that I may not have mentioned. Without that, community gathering, all those kind of things, we wouldn't be in the place we are today. But there's only one thing that I'd like to mention that defines Reedable and Eguville area, and it's called resilience. Resilience is defined as any ability to recover from or adjust easily to a misfortune or change. That's exactly what they did. They're still picking up pieces, they're still moving on, but as you can see in this video, they're well on our way.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item L3 Health and Education Commission Committee Chairman Fieldod.
Chairman, thank you. We have no report. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 23rd, 5:30, in these chambers.
Thank you. L4 Property Management Committee Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report tonight, but our next meeting is April the 25th at 5:30 PM. Also, we got a tour of the juvenile detention center at 3:30, and if anyone besides the committee would like to come for that tour, we welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you.
3:30, April 25th.
Item L5 Public Works and Planning Committee Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Favorite topic is everybody's trash. Tonight, on your SharePoint, you should have already seen, or you can see it on your SharePoint, you have two attachments. One is a 10-year solid waste plan. Solid Waste Director Bishop Wagner will be presenting that. Then number two, we have a resolution for the 10-year plan. We're a member of the Central Tennessee Region Solid Waste Board that consists of Cannon, Warren, Coffey, and Rutherford County. Annually, we have to do a resolution to approve our 10-year plan update. That's what the resolution tonight will be. That's what Bishop will be talking about. Our original 10-year plan was submitted in 1994, but we annually have to approve this update. So at this time, I'd call on Solid Waste Director Bishop Wagner. Then I'll be back for the resolution.
Mr. Wagner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Bishop Wagner, I'm your Solid Waste Director, and to my left is Matt Davis, he's my Assistant Director. We're going to be, so before you have what is listed as Exhibit 1, it is the Rutherford County Solid Waste 10-Year Management Plan. As you can see, it is, it contains an introduction, it contains where we collect our materials at our 14 convenience centers, and the Haley Road Recycling Center has a brief discussion of transportation, the current disposal and recycling activities that we have going on, and a year-by-year plan outline. What the 10-year plan is for this year is to redraft the plan in accordance with the activities that we're currently engaged in, with the construction of the transfer station, with some of the new recycling and diversion activities that we've started just this last year with the single stream and some of the other activities. And following up that, there's a list of the 10-year plan update that's on there, that's the form that I fill out for the state through TDEC forms, that has all of the data that's in there for you to take a look at. This resolution discusses the plan as well as the annual progress report. We look at them as one. Annual progress report is basically a report of the activity that we did last year in terms of how much waste we collected and how much we diverted. The state has a goal of 25% that is required for each county to meet, or each region to meet. We are in a multi-county region with Cannon, Coffey, and Warren Counties. This year, our calculations were, and the way we do our calculations, was stunted a bit because the state had changed their form format, and those other counties, we're not able to aggregate them together. However, because of the volume of waste and recycling that Rutherford County does manage, typically, well, historically, the other counties don't really weigh more than a part of a percent or so over what happens. So I'm confident in saying that we've passed the goal this year with 26.08%. And that would conclude what this resolution is about. Any questions?
Any questions at this time? Thank you, Bishop.
And like I said before, on your SharePoint, you have your resolution before you. Hope you all had a chance to look it over, and that's what we're going to do, is hopefully approve this. So this is a resolution that certifies the update for the 10-year solid waste plan. It certifies it is accurate to the best of our knowledge. So with that being before you, I'm not going to read all the pages. I'll just move to approve this resolution as written.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution updating the 10-year solid waste plan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Our next Public Works meeting will be Tuesday, May 7th, 5:30.
Item L6 Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee Chairman Craig Harris.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have a report this week, and our next meeting will be May 6th, on Monday.
Thank you. Other business. Most of you probably have heard the State House passed a bill that would change our adequate facilities tax, and I've asked our mayor, Mayor Carr, Will Denami, Nick Christensen, and Michael Smith to kind of give a legislative update on that piece of legislation that just passed this morning, and pretty much the implications to Rutherford County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As most of you probably know, when we started this process last year, we passed a resolution 20 to 1, requesting our delegation to give Rutherford County the same authority that currently other counties and the cities within Rutherford County have as it relates to how we, this body would have the ability to pay for growth. There was a, that bill did not make it out of subcommittee, but there was an alternative bill that was filed by the home builders and realtors that did get traction. I'll be brief and short. It passed the House today 67 to nothing. It 67, excuse me, not 67 to nothing, but 67 votes, excuse me. It now goes to the Senate. The bill, according to this body and the wishes of the mayor, wasn't what we asked for. It wasn't what we needed. But there are some things in the bill nonetheless that we can move forward on. And so it's the opinion of the mayor that there is still opportunity in the Senate, with the Senate sponsor, to continue to tweak the bill to make it a little more palatable. But nonetheless, while it isn't what we needed, and it isn't what we wanted, it is a step forward. And so I'll allow Mr. Denami, if it's okay with the chairman, to explain those details, and maybe take some questions from the commission members.
Good evening, members of the commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. Just like the mayor said, so the bill passed today with 67 votes on the House floor. Largely, it's the same bill, the same that we've discussed previously, it's going to the Senate now, it'll be on the floor. I do want to make sure that everybody understands that the bill itself is, it's an authorization, so there's going to be work to be done by the county commission. So you're at a $1 rate right now on residential. What this bill authorizes you to do is go up 50% on residential and include commercial. So you can go up to $1.50 on residential and also include commercial. But you have to act in order for that to take effect. So you need to pass a resolution, two-thirds, in two consecutive meetings in order for that to take effect. So the law itself takes effect upon becoming law, which would probably happen, it'll probably pass the Senate next week, and then goes through a period of engrossing. So I would expect by the end of April, this to become law. And at that point, it'll be, the ball will be in your court of how you want to act and what you want to proceed with. So are there any questions that anybody has?
Will, if you would. Our adequate facilities now is in place. This will replace our adequate facilities tax statewide, and can you go over the basics of it and how it's different from what we have right now?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So technically, you have a school facilities tax, that's what the County Powers Relief Act is. If you recall, many of you saw the presentation I made that started in 2004, the county tried to amend private act, and then that didn't pass in the General Assembly. In 2005, all the legislation went to TASER. 2006, County Powers Relief Act was put in place. That created a school facilities tax at $1 on residential new construction. And Rutherford County in 2021, Senator Reeves and Representative Baum carried a bill which changed that act to allow for the dollar to be paid half at the issuance of the permit and the other half at the completion of the building. It's my understanding that was the catalyst to get Rutherford County to go into the County Powers Relief Act in 2021. So under the current statute, you have after four years, the ability to increase at 10%. That will still remain, so you'll still have four years from now, the ability to go up 10%. Right now, the baseline is $1 residential. This will allow This will allow you to change the baseline to $1.50 on residential and also include commercial. There is a cap on commercial, which is 150,000 square feet. What that means is that all commercial would pay on the first 150,000 square feet. So, a 300,000 square foot building pays on 150,000 and 145,000 square foot paying 145,000. So, you stop at 150,000. It changes the collection method for Rutherford County. Right now, you can do that at the issuance of permit. That will not be permissible going forward, so it will be done, must be paid upon the completion of the structure prior to the issuance of occupancy. So, that is a change, I think, that impacts Rutherford County in a way that doesn't perhaps impact other counties. But that change will take effect regardless of whether or not the commission chooses to exercise a new authority to go up to $1.50.
Also includes a growth language that does not exist now. Could you go over that once again for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, there is now a growth requirement that previously was not part of the County Powers Relief Act. That growth requirement is 20%. There's a secondary provision that would allow for a special census to establish 9% over four years. So, in order to be able to exercise the $1.50 and to exercise on the commercial, you must meet the 20% growth threshold current based on the census. So, Rutherford County meets that, has met it for the last couple of censuses. You'll have to continue to meet that standard going forward. In the event you do not meet that standard, you will revert back to $1 on residential without the ability to increase.
You'll lose commercial.
And you'll lose commercial. It has a growth requirement, so you do need to keep growing at 20%.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner James.
So, how's this affect when we don't reach that growth requirement? And then another question as well is how much are we looking to have to pay upfront before we start getting caught up with this valuation if the collection methods are now being skewed? Because did you just say that whether we opt in or out, we're going to be behind the eight ball from the beginning?
Let me take the... There's two questions there. First question was what happens if you don't hit the 20%? And then the second question was about the transition from permit, pay additions, permit. So, the first part is if you do not meet the 20% growth requirement, then you will revert back to $1 on residential only. So, that's what will happen and you'll stay...
Is there 9%?
Well, 9% is an alternative. So, you can have 9%. You can... The county can elect to do its own census and establish that it grew 9% over four years if you couldn't do the 20% on the census. So, it's a secondary measure. So, if you've had a spur to growth, that would be a qualifying action. So, the growth is a requirement in order to maintain that. In the event that you don't hit the growth, you fall back to $1 on residential. Yes, sir.
Is there a length of time penalty before you can come back up? If the growth comes back, you immediately come up or you have to wait a certain amount of criteria?
So, the growth is established based on those censuses. So, if you don't... So, the next census is 2030 and then the next is 2040. So, in 2030, if the county doesn't hit the 20%, you would have the alternative to establish that you'd hit 9% over four years. If you don't hit it, you don't hit it. It's a bright line, so you revert back to $1.
Will answer the question, second question.
The second question is about what happens in terms of the way payment occurs now at the issuance of permit and then once the bill becomes law, it's upon completion of the structure. And that's just a... That's a feature of the law, so that it's not optional anymore to collect it at the issuance of the permit.
If I may add, so currently, currently under the school facilities tax that we collect, we currently collect $1 a square foot. And according to Tanya Bell, we currently collect about $6 million a year. This new formula, which will take effect upon coming law, which should be by the end of April, 1st of May, it will reduce, potentially reduce our collections to $3 million in the coming fiscal year. So, we'll go from 6 to 3 in the first fiscal year of its application.
Is there a likelihood of getting money preset to start us off on this so that we don't have to have that potential gap?
Mr. Commissioner, this is the law.
It is.
Well, it's...
Well, I've been wondering if the Senate could have...
This bill has passed the House. This bill is not law. It still has... It still has to pass the Senate and be signed and by the governor engrossed, but under its current format, that is what we're looking at.
Michael, any comments on the collection? Let's see if Michael has any comments on the collection process.
So, currently, the mayor's right. We do collect about $6 million, $6 million a year on school facilities tax. However, two caveats to that. That is what we collect. However, the current budget is 4.8 million because we budget really conservatively on things like building permits, things that are cyclical, you know, that could go with the way the economy's moving there. And as of right now, that's split 50% into our debt service fund, 50% into the schools' capital projects fund, 177. And so, just to tell you, the interim plan would be if we don't collect any for eight to 12 months, that won't be the case, but let's say we didn't collect any. The debt service fund does have adequate capacity to float, to float that over the next eight to 12 months. And also, that debt service fund has 6.67.02 million dollars worth of revenue in there. So, you're going to have to make up approximately 2.4 million there if you're looking at it on a percentage basis there. And then Fund 177 is the school capital projects fund for their large maintenance, things like new roofs, new HVAC equipment and stuff like that. That fund would still has 10 pennies in it from the property tax rate, so it would still have a little over $15 million. They would have to delay some of their project needs, you know, maybe six or eight months potentially based on that. If the revenue came in stronger, we could amend it, you know, mid-year if all of a sudden it picked up in six months. Now, this... The other question is, does it... How does it impact us now, you know, right now? And so, because if I... As the way I understand this, if this law were to pass or this bill were to pass, it would become effective, let's say, May 1st as a date, to pick a date. We would... We have adequate investment returns in Fund 151 to make up the shortfall for the next two months. So, I don't foresee any negative consequences in our debt service fund as it stands today. We've already hit 100% of our budget revenue in Fund 151. And in 177, we would adjust accordingly with the school department on their projects as needed.
Michael.
If I can before you leave. Which the good news in this bill is the work that this commission did in the last budget cycle so that we could be in a position where the effects of this going from 6 to 3 in the next eight to 12 months is, I won't say insignificant...
It is not material.
It's not material. And so, and it's honestly, that's a credit to our budget process and making sure that we had strong fund balances so that we could insulate ourselves to some degree from the effects of this. Is that an accurate way?
That's correct.
So, the good news is we did a good job with our budget and it's now showing up in that regard.
Commissioner Kusch.
So, what I heard, I think, from our finance director is it's a calendar issue, really. It's not a shortfall. It's just... It's delaying the money coming to us a few months. And it sounds like the funds that are in question where this money is parked or goes, I won't flush maybe a strong word, but there's money in those accounts that we're not in dire straits. It's just a delay. We're not losing any money. It's just coming at a later date. Is that a fair statement? Okay. So, it's going to hurt a minute, but the money's coming and much more than we've ever received in the past, going from $1 to $1.50 plus commercial. Will, I do have one question. I don't want to gloss over...
Yep.
And I want to understand the... I understand the 20% census issue, but come back around to this 9% special census thing. Is that a positive loophole we need to look at or is it easier to do one than it is the other? I don't know. We probably haven't had time to examine it yet, but is that more achievable for us if we don't hit the 20% rate?
It just really depends on when the growth comes in, you know, when those numbers are. So, if you experienced a surge over four years, you might hit 9% but not hit... You might not hit 20% over 10. So, I don't know. The census will be very clear as to whether or not the county hits 20%. And I can tell you, based on the last two censuses from 2000, 2010, Rutherford County, obviously one of the fastest-growing counties in the entire country, grew at 80,000 people. That was 44% from 2000 to 2010. 2010, 2020, again, one of the fastest-growing counties in the entire country, grew at 80, roughly 80,000 people and it was just slightly under 30%. So, if you maintain that, it'll still be... You can just run the numbers and see you'll be over 20% in 2030, but if you keep growing at 80%, ultimately that is not going to be... Or, excuse me, if you grow at 80,000 people, ultimately that will not be 20%. So, the question will then become, is it 9% over four years? And if it is, you have to run a special census to show that, but that's a... That is a way to still qualify. Yes? So, next question was, is under the current law and what happens here, are we covered until 2030? I do believe that is exactly the case. And the next threshold question is, in the 2030 census, does the county hit the 20%? So, right now, the county's in the 20%. At 2030, you have to hit it again. And then at 2040, you have to hit it again. Is that... Yeah, is that that?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am no soothsayer or a shaman or a crystal ball reader, but I'm on the Regional Planning Commission, as is our chair and Pettis Reed, our chair of planning. And we debate growth multiple times a month. We attend conferences that talk about regional growth in Tennessee. We see the forecasts and again, there's a lot of what-ifs, politics being one of them. But the projected growth for middle Tennessee, Rutherford County, a major part of that, is very strong for the next several decades. So, I have a comfortable feeling that we will continue to grow and meet that requirement. What I am uncomfortable with is a handful of us for decades have tried very hard to get some kind of other tax development, tax relief, other than what we've got right now. And continually, we have been pushed back. I'm not convinced that in five, 10, 15 years from now, we won't be in the same exact position we're in right now. I am eager to make a motion when it comes to that time to take the $1.50 and the commercial, which is something we've never had. Because what the commercial aspect adds is, as the city of Murfreesboro is about maxed out and can't annex unless... They can't annex at will anymore, right? It's against the law. We are going to see more commercial. We see it in planning, more than just a dollar general. We will see more commercial. So, we have access to those... That money. So, I think the $1.50 is positive. It will certainly add finances to our... Is it enough? No. But it's a start. It is the breaking of the ice, is a place to build from. And I am, again, I'm not convinced 10 or 15 years from now, we are ever going to get a long leash for us to create our own destiny from the legislative body in Nashville, Tennessee, our capital. I don't think that's going to happen in my lifetime. So, thank you, Will, and thank all of you, Mayor, for where we are, at least with this opportunity. So, I'll let you continue with your story and I'll be ready for a motion if you need one.
To be clear, the commercial activity can occur inside of the municipalities and the county still receives. So, it's not just...
It's not just county.
Exactly.
It's the chair.
That's right. So, it's countywide, anywhere it is in the county.
Even better.
So... Yes, sir.
Other questions? Yes. Craig. I'm sorry. Chairman Harris.
Mr. Chairman, what I want to say is, we got to do a resolution. This to be ratified, we had to have two-thirds vote. So, I concur with... I want to talk about everybody because there was a lot of work done. Now, by the mayor, he did a lot of work. Some of us did a lot of work, Phil Wilson, Jonathan Beverley, you Chairman Phillips. And this $1.50, I concur with Commissioner Kusch, it's not enough. But $8 million is coming in and that's big for us. And just to let you all know that in 2023, we collected $353,000 in commercial. This will bring in 4 million. This is a big deal. So, I think that when you go through such an emotional, tough battle, tough battle, feelings are hurt, people get upset, but we had to be positive about this and we had to do what we got to do to move on. All right? Home builders, realtors, everybody tried to do what they wanted to do and they felt like they did what they thought was best. So, all of us need to thank everyone in this... And I call it a battle because I want to tell you something. I've been a commissioner for six years and I've lost every time. And me and Mike had to literally get on our knees and beg for a dollar a square foot. And everybody said I sold out. Well, we'll never get anything else. Well, it's three years later and we got $1.50. I'm not giving up hope. And if I'm gone from here, then you guys, continue the battle. All right? But we need to ratify this. We need the two-thirds vote and we're going to start getting with Nick Christensen is going to get the resolution and everything together. And we will be bringing this to you in steering and then we'll be bringing it to you in the full commission, two times. Has to be voted on twice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner James.
It gives me pause in other ways. I'm still focused on the 20% growth rate or the 9% over four years growth rate. The... I mean, this county, we all feel it. All our constituents feel it. We're busting at the seams in so many ways, right? And we have to maintain that growth rate or achieve that growth rate. I'm wary and want to be cautious that we might start approving projects, planning on trying to make sure we get there because we need to keep it because going back for a full census, back down to the dollar, is a scary prospect. So, I'm very wary on the fact that it might force us to grow faster than we want to or are willing to or need to in some areas to maintain the growth rate. Because like Mr. Kusch said, a lot of things change the parameters that could create that growth. I don't know what option it is, but I definitely know it's going to require a lot more study, a lot more digging in, a lot more soul searching for all of us.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Joshua, for that comment. It sparked one other thought. If we don't make a... If growth slows, common sense would tell you, if growth slows, so does the demand for schools. So, you know, one plus one is two, right? We don't... If we don't need the demand for schools, we don't need the money. So, it's kind of a yin and yang again. I've said that twice tonight. So, let's look at it that way. If we don't meet the growth rate and we go back to a dollar, the demand for is less.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what Chairman... Commissioner Kusch is saying is exactly correct. Our problem in Rutherford County is not growth. It's the rate of growth. And so, and I want to emphasize that because there are other counties and we're constant... to emphasize that, because there are other counties, and we're constantly comparing ourselves to Hamilton County. Now they get to compare themselves to us, because if we're not now, we very, very, very soon will be the fourth largest county in the state. But the fact remains is, Hamilton County's growth is on or about 1%. And so they're able to manage that growth with the current financial resources that have available to them, which are much different than ours. They are a little, but not much. Our problem, our challenge, is the rate of growth. And so we have been having growing pains, not unlike a teenage boy who's sore all the time for doing nothing but growing. That is our problem. We're sore all the time for the growth. And so, to answer your question, there are benefits to the county, in the fact that if our growth does slow down, let's say to 1%, that the demand for new schools certainly wouldn't be as great. And so the investment required, the capital investment for that infrastructure, would also go down. So that is an excellent point, Mr. Kusch. Thank you.
Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Oliver.
This is for Mr. Smith. Can you come back? Explain that money to me again, because to me, going from six to 3.5 sounds like a decrease. But then I'm hearing y'all say we're going to have more money. I'm just not clear on the numbers.
So, so part of this law, or potential law, regardless of what this body does, will make it so that instead of paying upfront, when you come apply for your permit, you will pay before you get your certificate of occupancy, when the building is complete and ready for inhabitants. And so what that does is, that's a pause, and it could be anywhere from six months to 18 months, you know, on the long end, where if you take a really large, big house that takes 18 months to build, where under the current situation, they may choose to pay their school facilities tax on day one, well, they now no longer will pay it at the very end. So meaning they could pull their building permit, you know, today, and 18 months later is when they pay that fee. And so you compound that over a lot of construction timelines, and you're going to have a delay in this funding, even if we stay at a dollar. And so that's what I was talking about earlier, where, you know, on a conservative basis, if we get nothing for the next two months, if this becomes effective May 1st, and we get nothing, which won't happen, and we'll get something, we'll get small amounts, that I think we could be fined this fiscal year. You know, we have two and a half months left, and this fiscal year, I think we'll be okay. Because, as the mayor mentioned, we did a really good job with our reserves, we budgeted conservatively, we knew the economy might slow, we didn't know what the Fed was going to do with interest rates. So we also budgeted our investment income lower, because we didn't know. And they just decided, you know, inflation came in hot this past week on an inflation report. So all of that being said is, it's a timing difference of when you pay that fee. But as we switch over, there's going to be a delay. You know, if it takes 12 months to build your home, or 10 months, you're not paying until the end of that now. You're not paying half upfront and half at the end, like the old development tax, even before the school facilities tax. So it's a timing difference. So we will get that money, it's the timing difference. And that's the painful period, is this six to 18 months, that we'll have to work through, you know, as we do the budget cycle this year. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
The end result is financially beneficial to us. But it's the end result, and not a combination of the beginning and the end. So that's what the new law does.
And ultimately, right now, it will be a net increase, once this is in full effect, and once that timing difference is done. Based on the current building permits, and based on the current square footage being built in the county, and obviously if the square footage were to decrease, you know, the revenue could decrease. But as far as based on our current trend of square footage built in this county, both residential, and obviously we don't have anything on commercial right now, I mean, you're definitely going to get several million more dollars that would go to education to build schools, and to keep the capital maintenance up at the schools. So the net effect is a plus for the county dollar amount. It's getting through that painful six months of the timing difference, six to 12 months there. So, but ultimately, we stand to collect more money because of the extra $1.50 on commercial that we get zero now, and the extra 50 cents on residential.
I do have an additional question. Why the cap on commercial?
That was, that was an amendment. There's a rationale behind it. I wasn't involved in it, but there's, that was an amendment that was put on the bill to cap, ultimately, the commercial exposure at the current rate, at, what is it, 225,000? And again, that goes up 10%. You can go up 10% every four years, but that's an amendment that was, that was the last amendment that was put on the bill.
And you say you're not aware of the rationale? Is that what you're telling me?
I wasn't involved in the negotiation of how, of determining 150,000 versus 250,000, or however they arrived at that number. I just, that was the result.
Okay.
Commissioner Piercy.
This question will be for Will.
Yes, sir.
How many other counties is this affecting, like it's doing Rutherford County?
Well, Rutherford County is unique, so no one is in Rutherford County's position. So to start with that. The other counties that are already in the County Powers Relief Act, I don't have a list of those, but it's Bedford County, Cannon County, obviously Rutherford County, and I can't remember who else is in there. I've got a list over here. There are counties that are under private acts, and there are, there's at least one county that's under a private act that is, that is going to come under the County Powers Relief Act, that's Murray County. So they will, they will be under these provisions once they make that change.
So basically, all the effort they're doing in Nashville is just affecting us today?
Well, if there are other counties that reach that 20% growth threshold by census in the future, and there are other counties like Montgomery County and Sumner County that could qualify, they have their own private acts, they would have the option to leave their private act and come under this. Then there's a series of counties that have their own private acts that would not leave their, they're not going to do that, like Wilson and Williamson. So they're not, they're not going to be impacted by this as well. So it's based on the census, the 2030 census will really tell you who the counties are, if they're not already in here, who will be eligible.
Now, I have a question for our finance director. I'm looking for a ballpark answer. The difference this 50 cents will make compared to an impact fee, had we got it, is there any comparison to the money that will come into this county?
Compared to the impact?
Yes.
Compared to a impact fee?
Right.
I'd have to pull up, I have no idea off the top of my head, I'd have to pull up my computer over there. I'd have to, I could get you an estimate based on a theoretical impact fee, but it would be a wide guess. So I'd have to look. If you'll give me a minute, I'll try to, I'll try to look.
So, just real quick, to add on to that, impact fees are generally going to be specific to a certain, you know, geographical area within the county, or a certain district, and you wouldn't know what the net revenue would be unless you knew what the subdivisions were that were going to be built, and feeding into a particular school, and all the third-party analysis going into what is a fair assessment on each lot that's being built, contributing to the impact fee. So there's a lot of unknown, so I think that's what he's trying to explain.
I'll give you that. The reason I've asked these questions, we've asked three, three times, for the, some type of impact fee, and now they're adjusting the dollar and a half, trying to drop us, my opinion only, not the commission's, my opinion, trying to drop us some crumbs to get us to quit. I feel like we're being sucked down a rabbit hole. I'm not against us getting more money, by far. We need all we can get. When is the timeline that we can join on this, Mayor?
So there are, there are two provisions in the potential law. If the law passes, there are parts of the law, the enforcement provision of the, to the CO, as opposed to the building permit, happens immediately upon passing law. And then there's another provision I want Will to speak to, with regard to enforcement, that has been completely deleted from the current law. So the county is in a particular place where it's going to, there's going to be some challenges. And I have no doubt, as Chairman Phillips has said, that we will certainly meet these challenges. I'm telling you, what we did in our budget is no small matter, that allows us to be very resilient. And I think, and I'm not going to get preachy, but the fact that we were celebrating one-year anniversary of the tornado, and that resilience is a testimony, and reflected in our financial decisions. But there are two provisions in the law that have, potential law that have different timeframes for implementation. One is immediate, and then one is after, as Chairman Harris said, after this body determines to ratify by two successive readings on a two-thirds vote, to go into the $1.50 residential and a $1.50 commercial. So that's, that's the timeline for effective, the effective date of the law as it relates to Rutherford County.
The earliest that the entire bill could go into effect would be July 1. That would be the earliest. Now, portions of the bill go into effect upon coming law. Other portions of the bill don't come into effect until this body ratifies on two readings, which the earliest that would be, would be a May reading, and a subsequent June reading. Is that correct, Chairman Harris? And then effective, effective, let's say, July 1.
Thank you. The reason I've asked these questions, it's been kicked around, I know we've got a comprehensive plan being worked on, it's been kicked around some to draw these lot sizes, it's going off the PUDs, back to one house, one acre, one house, five acres. I think we need to have that discussion and make a decision if we're going to change that or not, along with this dollar and a half. Make it count. If not, we're going to get sucked down in a hole, and we're not going to be where we need to be. And I see no possibility of us reaching that point, at the growth that we're allowing to happen in the rural areas today.
Commissioner Piercy, you're probably bringing up a point that a lot of commissioners have been thinking about for quite some time. The Steering Committee is, through the Planning Commission, is actively working on that comprehensive plan update. I've challenged the Planning Commission to have that complete. So instead of not having a commission meeting in July, we will have a commission meeting in July, if that plan is ready for us to make a decision on. That's my goal. Hopefully, the Planning Commission will be able to accomplish that. If not, it will be shortly after July. So what's in that comprehensive plan, and subsequently updates to our subdivision regulations, is in our near future.
So hearing your reply on that part, I would be, might not automatically make the motion tonight, but I would be willing to make the motion to wait in joining the dollar and a half program, until we figure out if we want to adjust our PUD size in house per acre, or house to five acres.
I think the, I think it's two different topics. What's happening right now is, if it passes the Senate next week, and the governor signs it, it'll be law immediately, and we'll have to deal with that law. So our only question at that time will be, do we want to stay at a $1.50, or, I'm sorry, at a dollar, or do we want to go to $1.50? That's the only decision we'll have to make. That resolution will go before the Steering Committee, the 1st of May, and hopefully, it'll come for the full commission at our May meeting, for the first reading. And then if it passes that, it'll go before this commission in June for ratification. And then if it's ratified, we can start collecting that $1.50 July 1. If we don't ratify it, it'll stay at a, at a dollar, currently what we have right now, plus all of the other intricacies of that bill, that are, that we don't have to deal with right now. But we will have to deal with them, regardless when it becomes law. And it appears that it'll become law somewhere within the next couple of weeks, around the 1st of May. That's what it appears right now. The other points that you brought up is something that's near and dear to all of our hearts, and this commission will be working on that separately. It won't, and what we do there won't have any effect at all on this adequate facilities bill. We'll still, we'll still continue to collect that. So it'll, it'll be entirely separate, what we do through our comprehensive plan, and any updated subdivision regulations at that point in time. Two different things.
I hope I'm not still here, when all this doesn't work. I have a bad feeling about being sucked in that rabbit hole I was talking about. I hope you're right. I hope your comprehensive plan favors our rural area. But you're going to have to show me. And I appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me go off for a second here. Last month, we talked about this bill, and not being our focus, and the bill that we've been working on, that was our focus. It had not failed at that time, but it has failed subsequent to our last meeting. So that bill is history. It's not anything that we need to be focusing on. And that's the reason for this discussion tonight, is because if this adequate facilities update becomes law, that's what we need to focus on. And how it affects our county, it can have some positive financial benefits. It is not what we were looking for. It is not. But it is what we have to deal with, so we will deal with it. Okay? And from that perspective, we want to look, look at it as a positive, because it does have some financial impact on the county. I'm not sitting up here saying that I'm happy. I am not. And I know most of us are not happy. But it is what it is, and it is a law that we will have to deal with. To make it real simple, you know, if, if, if the state legislature wanted to help us, they would have increased the adequate facilities from a dollar to a $1.50, added commercial to it, and not added anything else to it. But there are all of these other things that they've added to it, growth requirements, that encourages growth, and some would even consider it's uncontrolled growth. So they've added these things to it, and added, added the collection part of it, from beginning to end, to all end. So those are things that we're not happy with, but they're part of the law. So let's just deal with it, and move forward. Because it's not all bad. It offers us something. That is what we're dealing with, and we'll be dealing with over the next two months. But our comprehensive plan, subdivision regulations, and all of those updates that we've been working so hard on, is an entirely separate deal, and it will not be influenced, it will not be influenced by this state law. The adequate facilities bill would not be influenced by it either. If we had a, if we were successful in some type of an impact fee, it would not influence our vision for Rutherford County. Our vision for Rutherford County is what it is. We want it, we want it, a consensus of the community, that's what our Steering Committee is working so hard on, through our Planning Commission, and we want to know what, have some idea anyway, as to what our community, Rutherford County as a whole, will look like 20, 30, and even 40 years from now. So how we address that is going to be extremely important. In my mind, as long as I've been up here, it'll be the most important decision this commission has ever made. So pay attention, and I've asked you several times to pay attention. So what we do over the next couple of months is going to impact Rutherford County for decades. I won't be around to see the end of that long-term comprehensive land use plan. But my kids will, and my grandkids certainly will. And that's the legacy, I hope, that this commission leaves for the future, is a well-planned and organized comprehensive plan for Rutherford County. I'm sorry, Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, you're totally right, in what you're saying there. And Commissioner Piercy, I sat on that comprehensive plan committee, on the Steering Committee, and I want to promise you, we're also looking and I want to promise you, we're also looking at your rabbit holes out there. We're looking at what we can do with that to protect some of this rural property that we currently have right now. In fact, I guess that slowed some of it down because we sent them back to say, hey, this is not what we want at the beginning. We're looking at what's out here that's left. Some of the growth in Rutherford County will be affected by what is left out here in the county by the type of property that is left out there. There is property that now contains so many sinkholes that when you go out there to build on it, you can't build on it, the type of development you're really wanting, that you once had, and we're building on the corridors of Rutherford County where a lot of the good properties are. We're running into a lot of these situations where the soils don't work. We're running into a lot of these things when it comes before the Planning Commission. We see these things. We have a development right now that's been over a year and a half that keeps bringing back something to us, and they were out there just this past week during core drillings, just trying to find out where, what's underneath the soil. And they're finding caves, they're finding underground streams, they're finding all these sort of things that are sitting out there that they can't develop the way it used to be. So it's a whole different situation. Our comprehensive plan is looking at these things, and we're setting up different ways of how to handle these things. Just as what we have seen in this type of legislation right here, there are things placed there that some of that growth's going to be controlled anyway without anything that what we do and how it's done. But yet, I had to look at that when you talk about the percentage of growth fix, how much money we will get and what we'll get there. You've got to look at that, you know, why is that there? And I have to go all the way back, you know, I'll show my age right quick here. It just reminded me, growing up as a child here in Rutherford County, when we used to get out for two weeks to pick cotton, and I used to pick cotton, and when you got down to the very end of the crop, they would give you extra money for more pounds. And the more pounds you got, you got more money. Well, that's pretty much right here what we're talking about, this growth. The more growth you got, the more money you get. And that's what this sounds like that I hear here, and it's just, I didn't like it back then, I don't like it right now, and what we're talking about right here. But I think what we have to do is work for the better plan, is what the chairman has said right here, and what we'll be doing, working within the Planning Commission and within the comprehensive plan, to work for the betterment of Rutherford County, to protect what we've got. What we've got to do now is deal with what we have on hand and the hand that we have been dealt, and that's what we've got to do.
Just to follow up, Commissioner Piercy, our comprehensive plan includes our incorporated areas, but not to the point where there's enforcement. So our comprehensive plan is really covering our unincorporated areas of the county, which is the rural areas of the county, which is what we've been trying to protect with any type of impact fee and those type of things. So there are two different things. We need to refocus tonight and concentrate on this particular law. Comprehensive plan, updated subdivision regulations are coming, and they will also be an extremely, as I said, an extremely important part. But I want to refocus us on this law tonight. Is there any questions that have come up, that you still have on how we're going to be approaching this? There are, when the law goes into effect, there are some things about it from a legal perspective that we're unsure how it affects developments that are currently in the chain. How does it affect approved developments that doesn't have building permits? So those are the type of things that we'll be finding out and interpreting the law, and Nick will be handling some of those things over the next couple of weeks before the bill gets, before the resolution gets before our Steering Committee. We should have those answers then. So there are still some things that we have to work out, and we just don't know how to interpret some of the language in that bill, but we will. Commissioner Oliver.
I guess my question is, is that it? I mean, should this body decide to ratify this, does that mean we're done fighting for more? Oh, just wanted to be clear on that. I just want to know what Mr. Denami's role is going to be, because we didn't get what we wanted. What we got is not enough, so what are we going to continue to do?
If I can, Mr. Chairman. So I've had this exact conversation with Senator Reeves as of yesterday, and what Senator Reeves has said continuously is that he's committed to trying to help Rutherford County and that he knows that after this bill, there will be more things that need to be done, and he said he is committed to immediately after this bill, or after the close of this General Assembly, to start working on more things to try to help this county. So I want to be.
Is he the only one? Because I find it interesting that there's a delegation that is not supporting Rutherford County, a delegation that's been voted by a lot of y'all that's not doing things in the best interest of our county. I find that very strange.
Let's, I hear what you're saying, and some of those things from a personal perspective should work itself out. But I think if all of you represent people, and I would be willing to bet that all of you realize that a huge majority of your neighbors, people who voted for you, feel the exact same way that you do and were supportive of our efforts. State Legislature listened to lobbyists for special interest groups and not to the people who elected them. Hopefully, that will work itself out. We will not get involved in those conversations. That'll be up to the voters to make that decision.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Just some perspective on Commissioner Oliver's observations. I've been here 10 years, and in 10 years, I've met with a delegation once a year, and on January the 10th of 2024 was the first time in 10 years, a majority of those delegates said, we want to help. The previous nine years, it was hell no to any request for tax help to a person. January 10th, 2024, I heard a buck fifty, I heard impact fee, I heard sales tax sharing, I heard potential sharing of gambling revenue, I heard potential temporary sharing of the real estate transfer fees. I understood the delegation to be aware that we're, because of the mayor's presentation at Chamber of Commerce, they know we need $30 million a year, not nine. So we got about a third of it this year out of one bucket. If we did all 30 million out of one bucket, I fear we would stop whatever industry we're going after. So this commissioner, to use Chairman Phillips's words, this commissioner's looking for another bucket next year, another $9 million bucket, and the year after, another $9 million bucket. And I've heard our delegates say, we need 30 to 60 million, based on Michael's presentation at the request of the mayor at the Chamber of Commerce in January of 2024. We're a third of the way there. I think that's a huge, for me, I'm pleased with our delegation. We got $54 million in TISA funds. We wiped out a $30 million deficit at the school board this year going into this budget, and the school board gave us $30 million in cash to reduce the Beatty Elementary bond request because of TISA, this new state funds. The brick and mortar fund of $35 million a year this year was not enough to get into brick and mortar, but there's language to help brick and mortar in our TISA funding. I look forward to that being adjusted in years to come. So I'm more optimistic. We begged for money, we've been receiving hell no for my 10 years and Jeff's 30 years, not that years.
Thank you.
Then we heard yes, and now we're seeing 54 million last year in TISA, 9 million this year potentially in adequate facilities addition, and this commissioner's going to ask for more next year in other buckets so that not one industry's carrying all the load. Thank you.
There's your answer, and after the new commission year come September 1st, the Steering Committee will have the opportunity to look at our legislative agenda for next year.
Just, I think this will conclude. We, this body approved $60,000 in an impact fee study and report to generate ammunition. What would the impact fee be? What logic would go into it? And I think with that ammunition, we have an additional argument that Will can present to the delegation next year. Right now, it's just, we want an impact fee, next year perhaps, is we want an impact fee of X dollars per lot, or based on the report that's a fact and some data that could help influence to our benefit as well. Just thank you for that indulgence.
If I could, there's a lot of numbers being thrown around, and I want to make sure this body has the numbers from planning and engineering. And so the numbers that we're potentially going to receive based on historical data provided by planning, engineering, and Tanya Bell in codes department is, currently we collect on or about $6 million in school facilities tax based on a dollar per square foot for each home. That increase of 50 cents will be an additional based on current data of $3 million on the residential piece. So we'll add potentially $3 million based on current data to the $6 million for the residential. The commercial piece is, we average over the last five years in Rutherford County, including the municipalities, about 2 million square feet a year in development without any cap, the 150,000 square foot cap that Mr. Denami referenced. So if we grow at 2 million square feet a year, commercial at a dollar fifty, that is an additional $3 million without a cap. So that's where, those are the numbers based on the current data we have. Now, that data, as Chairman Harris is talking about, doesn't include any growth, right? It's just, all we have is the historic data. That's all we can go by is historic data. We can't project beyond that unless you want to plot out a regression curve, and we can certainly spend the time to do that. But my point being is, this bill will generate new revenue in the neighborhood of 5 to 6 million dollars a year, new revenue, in addition to the current revenue that we're getting at $6 million. However, again, like Mr. Denami said, the collection timeframe has changed, so it is now delayed anywhere from six, eight, to maybe 18 months. So we're not losing the revenue, it's just delayed. There's a time factor here. That's all that's going on here is a time factor. So I want to make that real clear. And what Commissioner Dodd, Chairman Dodd, was saying was absolutely correct. We, Will Denami and I, and Chairman Phillips and many of you, talked about many buckets. It was, I want to make something clear. It was never the intent in the legislation that we all tried to pass where we would bury the burden of the growth on any single one industry, but spread it out. And so I think, Will, we talked about online gambling as a place, more sales tax revenue to the county as a place. There were like a half a dozen different buckets beyond impact fees and development taxes that we were talking about trying to access on behalf of Rutherford County. So it was, like you said, it was a very much a multi-pronged approach, which is what we were trying to accomplish, and we fell short in that regard. This is what we have. Like Chairman Phillips says, we're going to make lemonade.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify. Commissioner Oliver, I think I may have given you, I may have not been clear in what I was saying. I want to be crystal clear. I've talked to every member of the delegation, and every member of the delegation has told me to my face, they want to help Rutherford County, every single one. Specifically, when I was talking about Senator Reeves, I was talking to Senator Reeves about some legal questions that are in this bill that uniquely impact Rutherford County, and we were looking at trying to address those particular legal questions. It's going to be up to legal counsel to determine how the county will work on those. And in that discussion, we talked about, like the mayor's saying, some of these other steps that we had talked about, and he reaffirmed his commitment to work on that. So I just want to be crystal clear and fair to the delegation, that all of them, every member of the delegation is committed to me, that they would, wanted to work on Rutherford County, help Rutherford County, and I want to make sure that was clear.
May I respond?
Yes.
To me, if you can't even get a second for a discussion, that speaks volumes, regardless of what you say, they said to you face to face.
Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Phil.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Wilson.
I also would like to offer just a little perspective on this. I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to a lot of people that have worked for months to do anything for us. The impact fee was not heard. It was not heard. It had no chance. I had conversations with people saying it was dead before it got there. We've had that conversation before that day came up. We were told there was no political will to do this. So the surprise for me was not there. What I do want to say is, I'm thankful for, and this is perspective I really want to share, at the end of the day, this was a self-imposed tax, a bill that was brought with an agreement from these industry people to tax themselves. We didn't force this, and the state government couldn't force this. So I just want to add perspective and say, they could have all said, no deal. There wasn't even a discussion for the impact fee. There could have been no deal for what I'm going to call Bucket 1. But a lot of people were tirelessly saying, we need something, and this did not pass without opposition from people in that industry. It did not. In fact, the commercial piece, Paul Latour did a wonderful job of making sure on behalf of Rutherford County, he spoke with the state chamber to make sure they understood how important this was for Rutherford County to get help. So there's just, I want to make sure that the tone that comes out is, thank you to any of the people that are watching that were a part of drafting a self-imposed bill to help Rutherford County in Bucket Number 1. This commissioner is appreciative because they did not have to do it because we clearly could not force any help. I just want to make sure that that spirit is going through here. It's not what we wanted, but it was help that was not forced, it was offered, and it's going to produce millions of dollars of needed revenue. So I just want to say thank you. I'm grateful and appreciative for Bucket 1. I think this opens the door up to show that we can have conversations between all bodies, whether it be industries, whatever they are, the county government, the state delegation, and we can come to some resolutions to get support and help.
Thank you.
So just want to offer that perspective. Thank you for everyone that worked to get thus far in Bucket 1 to help Rutherford County because we're going to need your help every year for the next decade plus, and I want to make sure we keep that communication line open.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I want to wrap this up. This presentation was on, the bill that passed the House today will go to the Senate next week, and there is a 90% chance plus that it will pass the Senate and go directly to the governor's office to be signed, and that will probably happen somewhere over the next couple of weeks around the first of the month. So that will become law. It will replace what we have right now, and this conversation is how we're going to deal with that. The other things are opportunities for us as we go forward. And I want to emphasize what Chairman Harris and Commissioner Wilson were just talking about. This is a positive conversation that we're having. We're not looking back on things that didn't happen, but we're looking on things that happened and how we can implement those to benefit the citizens of Rutherford County. We'll also begin, continue to take a look at our comprehensive plan, our subdivision regulations, but that will be at a later date sometime this summer and into the very early fall. So today, we're concentrating on how the new law impacts us and revenue stream in Rutherford County. It'll have a long-term financial benefit. I am going to say that it's not what we were looking for, but it is what it is, so let's take it and go on. What will happen? When the governor passes it into law, it'll be probably shortly before our next Steering Committee meeting, which I think is on the 6th if I'm not mistaken, Chairman Harris. committee meeting, which I think is on the 6th, if I'm not mistaken, Chairman Harris. The resolution will be ready for the steering committee. If the steering committee passes it, it will go before the county commission next month in May. And if it passes by two-thirds majority, it will also be on the June regular meeting for ratification by two-thirds. If all of those happens, we'll go from a dollar to a dollar 50 cents residential plus commercial. That's the only change that we'll be making. We'll be voting on increasing adequate facilities from a dollar to a dollar 50. All of the other things are the implementation of that and how we collect and the growth rates and all those things, we have no voice in. It'll be law, and we'll deal with that. There are some challenges that we're, work through over the next couple of weeks to make sure we interpret the legal ramifications of that and have all of those answers when the resolution goes before steering. Any other questions, final questions? I'd like to thank the mayor for his continued efforts to increase revenue, alternative revenues in the county. There's no telling how many hours he's put into this. And not to paraphrase, but to kind of use his own words from some conversations that he and I had, I'm tired of talking about these type of things. Let's get on to other business in Rutherford County, and that's what we're talking about tonight, is us moving forward in a positive direction and not place blame and run down anybody else, but to look what we have control over. And those are the things that we'll be looking at, our Comprehensive Plan, our subdivision regulations, and how they affect us and future generations. Okay? Will, thank you. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Michael. And thank you, mayor. Okay, shout outs. There are a lot of things that we can shout out about. You just heard a perfect example of things that are going positively in our county through our juvenile detention center. And that juvenile detention center is, through a board operation, is a sight to see right now, and we appreciate all of their efforts. And I just want to give that shout out, and I know some of you feel the same way. But just to reiterate, I want to give a shout out to our mayor and our department heads for supporting us in our efforts in Nashville this year. So I just want to thank the mayor's office, and I want to thank all the commissioners, especially the chairman that have worked so hard on our efforts, lobbying efforts in Nashville. And I know that they will continue into the future. Any other shout outs?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McMurray.
I got a couple of quick shout outs. I just want to reiterate how blessed we are as a county regarding our health department. I'm sorry, earlier this year, Lisa Kay sent out and stated that the Tennessee Department of, excuse me, Health Mid Cumberland Regional Office has chosen the Rutherford County Health Department as the Outstanding Health Department of the Year amongst the 12 counties within the region. So I think that's a big deal to be celebrated. So let's give them a hand clap for that. Then secondly, last for me, each month, I try to spotlight a local business. I apologize for last month not spotlighting Simply Pure Sweets for providing all the sandwiches that Trey ate during the meeting, and no one else got any, him and Chantel, along with the cookies. So shout out to them on the square. Hold on, Trey, just a second. And then secondly, I have another local business called Atomic Wings. They graciously provided us with boneless wings over there in the, in the room. So please take the time to, you know, visit these local businesses. I'm doing this to kind of spotlight them. It's the growth that's in our county, and they're spending small business money to keep things going, and we want to show our support, and they give this to us for free out of their own pockets. So I just want to spotlight them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you go eat wings, I'd like to take just one moment to recognize a former colleague from the commission. I was here 17 years with her, then I left for a while, and she remained for, I think, two more, through two more elections. But it's Carol Cook. I was told this afternoon that Saturday will be her birthday. She will be, she'll be 12 years older than I am. So if you know how old I am, you know how old she's going to be or that she is. Carol Cook served, forgive me if I get this wrong, but I think it was 32 years here. I think the whole time she was on the community care board. Carol, to this day, reaches out to the community care board. She cares about people, but community care residents all get a Christmas card, steals from Carol Cook at Christmas. Carol's light has shone for many years, more than mine. If I have a very bright light, I don't think it probably compares to hers. But if someone's in need, Carol Cook has always been there. If it's, if there's any way that Carol Cook can help anyone that's in need, if she knows about it, she'll do it. She always has, and she continues that. It's a glorious day for Carol Saturday and for anyone that has been acquainted with her. She's a great person. She's a good Christian lady. She served the community well up here as well as Laverne or anywhere she is. One night up here, I was really embarrassed by Carol. She brought some red nose apparatuses up here for every commissioner. And forgive me, but I forget what it was about, but it was something she cared dearly about. And when she was speaking on that topic, we were to wear the red nose. That was very embarrassing, but I loved her for it, and I did it out of respect for her because that's one thing she did. She respected everyone. She showed that respect, and her light has shined, like I said, for many years. And I pray that Carol has many more years that her light can shine brightly for Laverne and this county. So Carol, at this time, I'm going to sing. No, I'm not. I'm not going to sing, but we all wish Carol Cook a happy birthday for Saturday. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Ms. Cook. Anyone else?
Really quickly.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, sir. I had the opportunity to participate in the Title I planning meeting of Laverne Lake Elementary, Roy Waldron Elementary School, and Laverne Middle School. And I want to shout out not only these schools for their growth, but I want to shout out the parents of those students because the parents came, they participated, they gave great feedback and input as far as the direction that they want to see those schools go. And I was very encouraged by the amount of parents that came out and participated in those planning meetings. So I want to shout out the parents.
Just a quick follow up on the tornado and the tornado cleanup. You can see what a difference a year makes, but the absolute positive response from the community, not just county government, but the community as whole is overwhelming to a person like me. And I just, once again, thank the people. I think Commissioner P. was intimately involved in some of that cleanup and spent hours himself and his family out there with that. And I know countless others of you did, but it's near and dear to his heart simply because it was in, Reddenville was in his district and not only in his district, but his hometown as well. So thank you, everyone, for your response. And you can see what a difference a community response makes. And if you've noticed on the news, when they have a follow-up report of other disasters that have happened, nothing to the magnitude of what happened in Rutherford County happened in some of those other places. But it's an absolute joy to work in a, in a community and to live in a community like Rutherford County that cares about each other and responded, responds to the needs of our citizens. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Commissioner Reed.
Just as of today, and you are the first group to know this, Sunday, May the 1st, at 2 o'clock, we're having another flag raising on one of our public safety buildings. And we're opening the Last Cassis Public Safety Building at 2 o'clock out there. We invite all the commissioners to be out there for this great occasion. It'll be just like the ones we've already done, but it's going to be an exciting time for the Last Cassis community. I don't know how many have come up and asked, when are you going to have the open house for that? But they're going to start placing equipment in there, the 22nd. So the 5th, we're going to have the first open house for it. The 5th of May, 2 o'clock, we'll look for all of you there, and we're going to raise another Rutherford County flag.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner James.
Next month and during May, every weekend, the Renaissance Festival is going to be back up and going to bring some light on what we saw last year with a lot of the traffic issues that were up there on Span Town Road in the back way. So if anybody's seen this, could please funnel their way through Highway 96. It would greatly help the residents of Span Town Road. Thank you.
Anyone else? It's been an interesting night, an informative night, and this commissioner appreciates you for not only your attendance, but your participation in this process. We've, we've come a long way in a couple of years, but we still have a long way to go. Pay attention this summer. It's one of the biggest, biggest opportunities we have to develop a plan for what our community should look like for decades to come. Once again, God bless you, and thank you for being here. We're adjourned.